We are going to call our meeting to order.
Oh, they took my microphone away so I wouldn't do.
No.
In it.
Do you want this one?
Apologies for being a few minutes late here. Okay.
I know me too.
So.
Can't keep it together.
We need to first approve our second agenda item. It's approving our prior meeting minutes.
Video.
Oh, let me see the video thing. I have like three things going on right now.
I know, I know.
It's okay, it's okay. I'm gonna be all right. So just so everyone is aware, we are recording. As per Massachusetts general law, we need to make sure everyone understands that. And if anyone is from that's attending tonight is recording, just indicate by raising your hands so that everyone is aware that that is happening. Okay, great, thank you. So now we're going to move into our second agenda item. So we're gonna approve our prior meeting minutes. Colleen, in her awesomeness, put the minutes into our folder. As a reminder, we are approving the. We approve minutes from our regular meetings in our regular meetings. And then we review meetings for executive session within executive sessions. For approval. All right, so.
Are we starting with 9:12?
We might, we very well can.
Knock it out.
If you if you review them and we can also just do without objection and approve them unless there's one that people have anything that they wanted to amend.
So.
The only thing I did.
Together. Oh, okay. Then we can't do that.
Yeah, I did have one. I just wanna actually clarify or but.
Is it for one of the more recent ones?
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the September 12th meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Discussion?
I just I'm gonna give edits to Colleen because there's just a few typographical things.
Yeah, like apostrophes.
So.
Okay.
Misspellings of names and stuff. So I'm gonna with with edits with, yeah.
So I think. You're gonna change, you're gonna amend it.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, with with edits, yeah.
I don't wanna go through them because.
So amend my motion?
Just say with edits.
Amend my motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'm amending my motion to say I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes with edits.
Per Mary Branley?
Per Mary Branley from September 12th, 2019.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, very good, thank you.
Can we do the same thing for the next one? Make a motion with edits since.
Well, I don't recall something. It was about yesterday's meeting. It was a long day and I can't recall how something went. And so I just need something to validate, but.
So we could say just with grammatical, so not content. I think it's good to make sure that we're clear.
Yeah, mine's content related.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine's content too, actually.
Okay, so go to so go to whatever ones you need to and let's let's take the next one then in order. What's the next one?
Was it 15th yesterday's?
Yep.
I had a question about the motion to enter into executive session. Was that Mary, was that yours?
That was me too.
Okay, was that not you other was Bethland, right?
No, it was me, but I was wondering if I also have to roll call because there's only the four. The fact that I made the motion, I think I also have to.
Yeah, you should also be in the roll call.
So that was the only thing that I had. And then I also, the only other thing that I had was up at the top where it says school committee engage in discussion of the two superintendent candidates. I thought we should put finalist superintendent candidates. That was it, that's all I had.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes with the content edits specified that the language will be indicated as finalist and that Mary Branley is added to the roll call vote to enter into executive session.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, very good. Great. So. That's to take care of that, good. So now we're going to move into chairpersons or board. So I do have a couple of things to to talk about. I did have a list at home that I left at home as I was trying to get myself out the door. So first off, we will hear later about subcommittee meetings. I know that there's been budget subcommittee, I just wanna mention that because it's high budget season. So at the in our members comments, we'll be able to report out on that and where things stand there. Very good. We have since the last meeting, we have had three of us attended an MMA meeting that was an open forum where we heard from the community about considerations around the most excellent music program that we have here in Maynard. And then we also once had a, I think there were 10 people in the room, administrations, school committee and parents MMA the next day, the next morning, where we were able to really talk through some short term considerations looking to next year and then also longer term considerations for the music program. And we also put out a community statement to try to just help people understand where things stand. So I just wanted to mention that. So we're very, very attentive and aware of the situation and we obviously appreciate that there are people here tonight that are very likely have that consideration in mind. Thank you. Sorry. So so that's that. Then also I wanted to mention that we need to consider how we're going to approve minutes for the subcommittees. So those minutes have to be taken, but we can, we don't need to do it right now, but I just wanted to mention it that we should probably consider it for the next time. And we need to either have approval by the public body chair alone, by majority vote or by consent. So approved unless there's an objection. So we can decide how we wanna do that, but that is something that we need to make sure is happening. So I wanted to mention that because it came up when Colleen was once again doing her rock star duty of making sure that we got all the minutes in line.
Does that not happen in the subcommittees to vote? Because I know that the Green Meadow Future Committee votes on their own.
Yeah, these are subcommittees, so it's different.
Okay, so it's different than.
Yeah, there's since there's because there's only two of us as a subset of the.
It's only the ones that we're on?
Yeah, yeah, but anyways.
So then how does so then how does that work?
I'm not actually talking about it right now. I just wanted to mention it for us to consider in like the next agenda. So if you have questions and you wanna shoot them my way via email so we can try to make sure that we consider it, we can definitely do that. And because it's procedural, like if if some people wanna throw their ideas my way for how they think we should do it based on the ideas, then we could even potentially get it done via email without needing to worry about a open meeting alone in quorum if we if we channel it directly to me. Okay? Awesome. I love that you guys wanna get right into it though. All right. Let's see, and then I think that we have obviously, people may have seen the announcement that, "Chairman, please, we have a finalist candidate that was approved to move into negotiations, Brian Haas, who is currently the executive director of the Abby Kelly Charter School."
Foster.
Foster, I knew I was missing a word in there. It's a long name. So in any case, we are extremely excited to be moving into this phase and I could go on for a little while, but we went on for a little while last night.
We did that last night.
So I'm not going to. So.
Can I just say that I had to contact him a couple times about the announcement and twice he told me how excited he is.
Yeah.
To potentially be the the next superintendent of Maynard's school. He's thrilled.
And his his energy is infectious. That's for sure. Very good, okay. So we are now going to move into the student report. Is it Patrick tonight? Come on down, come on up.
All right, so let's see, Tuesday was the 14th. So on the 14th, the Senior Triumph Honor Society had their induction. So if you don't know what Triumph is, it's a national music honor society. We started a chapter at the high school going into this year. So we had 10 members and then we inducted five on Tuesday, so now we're at 15. And we're expanding to junior triumph, which includes grades eight through 10. And then the senior triumph is juniors and seniors. And so the idea is it community service through music. So our first service project's on the 24th. And it's just a movie night, so we're inviting chorus and band members between the grades of eight through 12 to join us the Friday, the last Friday of midterms to have some stress relief. We'll have some dinner, dessert and watch The Hunchback of Notre Dame, which is known for having a very good film score. And then our triumph induction will be in February, date to be determined, but applications are going out now for eighth, ninth and 10th graders. Our midterms start next week at the high school, so I know people are gearing up for that. Very stressful, but we'll get through it. Let's see, yesterday and tomorrow and Saturday, the senior districts. So that is within the central district of Massachusetts, set by the Massachusetts Music Educators Association. They hold auditions every year, so our instrumental and vocalist audition. And we've had, we got six got into central districts this year, three in chorus, one in orchestra and two in band. So they had their first rehearsal yesterday and tomorrow. And then the concert with, you know, the top high school musicians in the district will be playing at Mechanics Hall on Saturday. That's very exciting. Mr. Kozic was there all day yesterday from three to nine, met us back at the school and wished us luck. He was very supportive the entire time. NHS update from Talal over there. They finished the library project today, so they concluded a total reorganization of the reference and fiction sections. A mural was painted in the corner of the library and they plan to work on the library website and revamp it. They also have started their January through April service projects. These are the individual service projects, yes. Our senior project papers are due tomorrow, so if you see me and Tal over there and T-Bevs, he's there too. If you see us over there working, that's what we're doing. We're finishing our 12 to 15 page research paper. And let's see, mock presentations are, well, they're actually, they're real presentations. So in the midst of writing a research paper, the seniors are also, you know, building their presentations that coincide with their research. So presentation started on Tuesday and will be going through midterms for each of the classes. Mock interviews were last week, so I know some of you were there. That was that was a nice experience for students to experience an interview and they got feedback from their interviewer. Cocoon Cramming, also related to midterms, is on January 21st. It's an invitation to any high schooler. It's in the CAF, CAF and library. It's basically a massive study session. Teachers are invited to help students learn the material in preparation for midterms that start the following days. Early action college decisions are coming out. Well, some have already come out and usually February 1st is the the last day that they announce early action for a lot of schools. So I know some people are are very excited and scared and lots of emotions. And last not least, sports, varsity jackets are being provided by the Booster Club as always. So those have started going out to the varsity students that are eligible. Basketball started and is going. And winter running club, which is a new activity this year, has also started and is going smoothly. Any questions? Sorry.
Take a breath.
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to thank you for your advocacy in the music program. I know that you are behind that a lot, so.
Thank you.
Message received and thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention that it's really cool. I understand that the Triumph induction program is the only one of its kind in the country. And it just sounds like it's a very, something we need to be very proud of and the students that are involved in that. So and there's clearly a lot going on at this time of year. Yeah. All right, anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, very good. So now we're going to move into the interim superintendent's report. Take it away, Mary Jane.
We got it. So just wanted to let you know, I kind of separated a little bit today into schools and central office.
Great.
Green Meadow will be starting Hi-Fi Fridays for our students, so that will be, police and fire will be at the elementary school to greet our students in the morning, wish them a good day. And our new school resource officer, Officer Regerio will be coordinating this monthly event, so with Green Meadow, so that's exciting. They did have one earlier in the year, but now they're being much more strategic when they do it every month. So updates on preschool and kindergarten. This week they had kindergarten registration, so any student who was, any child who is five as of September 1st are eligible to attend kindergarten for next year. We had registration Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday of this week. If anybody was not able to attend, you can certainly stop by the school office at any time to get the materials. The only thing that anybody will need is proof of residency and a birth certificate. So we'll have a kindergarten orientation in the spring, but if you know anybody who has children at our kindergarten age, we'd appreciate getting that information sooner or later, it really helps us plan the kindergarten program and classrooms and such, getting that together. Preschool information night will be held Thursday, January 23rd at 6:30 at Green Meadow. During this evening, the classroom teachers will share informative presentations about the high quality engaging and nurturing preschool program. Applications will be accepted during this information evening as well in the school, as well as in the school office. Today, Holly Camero from the Beacon Village came to talk about the preschool program with some Jane Vasta and Donna and Charles Gubron was there, so to highlight the program. So that will be in the Beacon next week, so the parent information will also be out there as well. So that is that. Fowler, a lot of exciting things happened at Fowler this year. This is the first year that students in grade six to eight are participated in the National Math Olympiad. This is a national program that students take a paper, a paper exam and they submit the results to see how well our students compare to everybody in the nation. So we'll let you know how that goes. It's a competitive exam organized by the Science Olympiad Foundation. So it's really for cultivating scientific reasoning and logical ability among students through a rigorous test. So this is the first time and there are 3,000 teams with more than 65,000 students competing worldwide, so I'm anxious to see how our students do on that. So we have two teams. The middle school has 32 seventh and eighth graders and the elementary, which is fifth and sixth graders, has 29. Spelling Bee took place on January 9th and our students did really well. I passed out certificates with Mr. Barth and Mr. Costello on Friday and they did other ones on Monday for the fourth and fifth grade. 78 students received accolades, 25 in grade four, 22 in grade five, nine in grade six, 10 in grade seven and 12 in grade eight. Unfortunately, fourth and fifth graders don't participate in the actual spelling bee until next year, but they do get recognized. Students in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, will be 10 of them, will be compete in the spelling bee finalist on the 23rd, lot happening on the 23rd in this district. They will be invited to the state spelling bee, the winner of that. And if they win the state spelling bee, then we want to Washington DC, so let's keep our fingers crossed. And I think there's a little bet going on with the upper class because I guess the fourth grader won the geography bee, so, but you're not gonna participate, so. It was it was kind of a a nice little competition with the kids, it was cute. Maynard High School, lot lot happened. On Tuesday, January 5th, the Worcester County Superintendent's Association hosted a scholar's luncheon to honor two students from each member's district high school. We had two students, Ginny Mannan and Noah DeCastro. We went to Holy Cross College and met with more than other 70 other students, so that was a great day. I enjoyed talking to Ginny and Noah. They had big plans. They were, had their college applications out, but they haven't heard back from anybody yet, so they had a couple of early applications in, but we're waiting to hear on them, keep you updated on that. So on Wednesday, unfortunately, I was not able to attend the mock interviews that, why what is it? Why am I having a break? Our Patrick, Patrick just talked about, so I was unable to participate in that. Sorry, Patrick, I was just had a brain issue there. So so that was part of the college and career readiness platform. It was very successful. I know Michelle Resendez really likes doing that every year. Maybe we can get her to come back next year to participate as well. So that was a great program. I really, really wish I was able to attend. It was rescheduled a couple of times, so I was not able to attend this one, but I'm looking forward to hearing more about it. So congratulations to the students and Mrs. LaBelle, who did a great job. The theater department are starting to rehearse for Dirty Rotten Scoundrels, so that's gonna be a fun, exciting spring play. And it's gonna be under the our new theater director, Ryan Defoe. So stay tuned for more updates and information on that. We do have an update on the business manager. I did talk to somebody today. I'm not gonna give the information quite yet because I'm just having her come in Tuesday to talk about negotiating a contract for this particular person. So I'm excited about that. Michelle and I met with several people and really she was the best candidate. We're very happy with with her credentials and we do think that although she's not Michelle.
You were just gonna say she has big shoes to fill.
She has big shoes to fill. But Michelle did a great job. We did some great reference checks and Michelle actually knows some of the people that she's been mentoring with and they gave a great recommendation, so we're excited to get her on board. Unfortunately, she will not be able to start on Wednesday, but she will give a two weeks notice, so she'll be here by the end of January if indeed the negotiations go well. But I don't expect any anything at this time. But I'll fill you in more once we have that information and I enter into negotiations with the actual person. Can I give a name out? Well, I think we need to also. And we have to talk to you guys about that as well.
Yeah.
So that's the other thing.
One of those positions.
So that's the other thing. So I just wanted to see how that goes and I think we have to do a vote as well.
We do, we have, yeah.
Yeah.
So she's an interim.
She'll just be an interim, yeah. It's an interim position, it's not a full time position, so you know, we thought we'd save for the new.
I think what we originally had sent said to her was until June 30th.
I wouldn't say her name until we. But, yeah. Yeah, so it's just an interim position. So we're, you know, we're confident in her, so once I get that information, it just happens yesterday, so.
So maybe we can add that to the.
It will be on the agenda for January 30th, yep.
Okay.
Yep, so that's that. And then I think there's something in your packets from Colleen. The Maynard Education Association awarded more than 20,000 in grants to teachers and students last year and there's a copy of the annual report for you.
Sorry, Maynard Education Foundation.
What did I say?
Association.
Oh.
It's all the time.
Okay.
It's the Maynard Education Foundation.
Oh, okay. Foundation, I have association in my notes, I'm sorry. So, yeah.
One's the teachers' union, the other one is.
Oh, you're right, that's probably why that was in my head. So, yeah, so there should be a copy of that in your in the notes to take a look at what they've actually, what they participated in. You do have some more notes, information about Green Meadow, but I'll have. Greg, I can't think today, it's the end of the day today.
What is up?
I will have the town manager talk a little bit about that and I'll contribute to that as well. It's a long day. I'm Natasha.
Natasha.
And that's all I have for today. I better, I better stop talking now.
So thank you very much.
Bethland.
So before I do, we do have with us Kate Hogan and I, as soon as she had arrived, I wanted to see if without objection, we would be able to take items out of order. She was next, so we have citizens' comments, but she was next after that if we just flip those. And it's just a very short for Kate and we're just very excited that she represented, Kate Hogan could be here with us for a moment. So Kate, if you would like to come forward.
Stop it, stop it. Oh, she's so mad.
Oh, you people.
......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Will you send that to us?
Oh, yeah. She got a surprise. I know, she's like, from A?
She's getting an evil eye over here.
A weepy evil eye.
Thank you so much for being here, Kate.
Thank you so much, Kate.
I'm not an emotional person and you're really killing me with this stuff.
We need the like the next couple of days that you're with us to really build up that.
So we also, I'm not gonna say anything further, just this is a thank you. So we have this for you.
Thank you. I should be thanking you to be honest. Thank you so much. God.
Thank you, Michelle.
This is horrible.
We're horrible people, yes.
I just wanted to say, I know I said it before, this was a really hard decision for me because I really love this district.
Don't make the rest of us cry.
I know, I'm sorry. I think there are really great things ahead for Maynard. I think there are great things that are happening right now and I honestly feel very privileged to have been able to come in here and learn as much as I have learned over the last three years with tremendous support from the community, from the school committee and from the administration of this district and the town. So I really honestly feel extremely blessed to have been a part of this and I'm very sad that I'm.
The feeling is absolutely mutual. This is Michelle's last meeting with us. She's just gonna come back sometimes just to hang out, just because she's gonna miss our meetings so much.
She wants.
And you and your buddy Mike back there.
He's probably like, how'd she get out of here before I did?
I'm like sweating now.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And I definitely am going to help with the transition as well. I'm I'm not leaving here to not ever be seen again. I 100% am devoted.
You'd have to change your cell phone number because.
No, I will keep it, whether or not I respond.[1625.04] Whether or not I respond, it's my question, but I definitely want to be able to continue to help support and move forward. So, really thank you. I'm really serious when I say this, like, thank you all very much.
Ugh, I was just going to say something while I cried, but I say it.
I'm not saying anything else. I had to tell them that we are doing much for her to get her to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I lied.
You lied. You lied. You 100% lied. And you lied. You both lied.
So seriously, you're the foundation, no one will see it, but the foundation of what will help us move forward. Like, that's what you have given us. So, thank you.
All right.
Okay, I'm done now.
Turning into a weak fest.
Okay. All right, so we're done with that. Now we're going to move into citizens' comments. There's just a few things I want to say as we introduce that. So we do ask that everyone comes to the microphone. I see we have people, we welcome everyone here tonight. We're really glad to have everyone participate and be a part of the community and to, and we would welcome you to come and if there's anything people want to say, you come up to the microphone and just say your name and kind of who you are in the community and then just share whatever you'd like to share. We do ask that people do their best to try to keep their comments to three minutes. It's not always easy, but that's just something that we are, just for the sake of time, we, especially right now, tend to have long agendas for our meetings as we're trying to get through things and so, but that certainly doesn't, don't want to keep anyone from saying what they feel like they need to say. And it can also submit comments to us via email too because it can be intimidating at times to come up to the microphone as well. So we're happy to take anything that anyone would like to say.
You can come up as a group.
Yeah, if you want to come up together.
Yeah, support. Hello, good practice.
Do you mind all saying your names though, just so we know who you are and like, what? Okay, awesome.
I'm Anne Duprah and I'm part of the eighth grade band.
I'm Laura Kyoto, I am also part of the eighth grade band.
I'm Helen Clementson, you probably get the theme, I'm also part of the eighth grade band.
I'm Liam Lawelven and I am, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're here to talk about the Maynard music program and we were, when we found out that it was getting like reduced in time and everything, a lot of us were like heartbroken in everything because, yeah. We've been in band since fourth grade and having the band slowly decrease over time, it's very like.
It's kind of sad.
Disappointing. And we just wanted to like comment about why we think we should keep the music program going strong.
Okay, so.
All right, Helen.
I don't really, I don't really do any major sports or anything, but I have a lot of friends who do and they usually run pretty late, so it's kind of hard for everybody to get up early in the morning to get to band and we just don't have a whole lot of time to practice for all of our performances and everything, so it's kind of difficult.
And then this year, we, they kind of just gave us our electives. We didn't have any choice, as we did last year. Last year, all of my electives were banned, like, I just wanted all of it to be there instead of Maker Space or Engineering last year, it's Maker Space now. Yeah. All the new ones that they've added into our schedule. And I think that this year, we had a harder time getting prepared for our concert since there were so much less time and so many kids, we couldn't get up in the morning at like 7:15, make it to school on time. And then after school, there's practices, so you're at school from like 7:15 to 5:00 in the afternoon, just a lot.
Yeah. Sorry, I got a cold, so I sound really bad.
But you're still here.
And like, we're losing like half our practice time. Like, even if like you go to all like the stuff like after school and before school, you're still losing like a lot, a lot of time. And like, it is affecting our plane. Like, I remember it was at our like concert, it was a while back, and it was like, toot, toot, toot. And then like, it was really, really bad, like compared to what we were doing last year. So just, we're not as good as we were.
So.
Take your time. Okay.
So I have three younger siblings. Can I have a word with this?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I have three younger siblings who are all in band and with all the band being decreased, they also get less time. So as we go into high school, we're going to be in band still. And as, let, band gets less and less, not many kids are going to be interested in band anymore since. Yeah, they won't have any experience and then there's just going to be like no high school band, so no Disney trips, no Washington DC trips. And these are the kind of things that kids look forward to as they go into high school. So I think that's something also.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, since we're in eighth grade, so we're a bit more experienced, it's going to be harder music and, you know, back to less time to practice, it's going to be a lot harder to get everything done in time because it's so much harder and it'll just get harder as we go up through the grades, so.
I had something else I had to say too. So in eighth grade, you're given a choice to go to Asabat or Maynard. And although I was thinking of going to Asabat, the Maynard music program is what I thought would keep me in Maynard. Although Asabat has like biotech and shops and everything that you might really want to do when you're older, the band is something that, we're a family. We all care for each other, we all play with each other, we all make jokes a lot. But it's what really kept me in Maynard. I was on the verge of going, I was thinking about applying and then deciding from then. You too? Yeah. And a lot of our friends were thinking too, like the WAGS backs and all of them, they're all like, oh, Asabat's so cool, but then there's band. And we love Mr. Kozak, he's probably.
Best teacher, the best teacher either.
Yeah, I always look forward to band. Day ones, go strong. Yeah, there's always like rumors like, oh, more band is getting cut off. And then when you find out it's true, it's a lot more heartbreaking, but I feel like we should stick together and keep going as a band as we come by Great East, which is in June, like around the beginning of June. Districts, which our auditions are February 1st this year, so that's coming up soon. Me and you were accepted into districts last year. It was fun and with less bands, less practice, not good chances. Anything else we want to say? No? No, that's about it. Just want band to stay in Maynard and keep going strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So I just want to say, I really appreciate, it's not easy to come up on this setting. I mean, everyone has a little trouble, it's really intimidating. I still kind of, it's been years and I still get anxious about being up here. So, thank you. And just know that we hear, we do, we hear you. We, in public comment, we don't, in the citizens' comment, we don't generally, we're trying not to like respond because it's not the time, like we, we got it, but please know that we, we do hear you and that we're in discussions and conversations and are going to continue to be doing that. We have a curriculum subcommittee, Strategic Planning and Curriculum Subcommittee.
SBNC, I kind of like go on just the letters.
Now you have an acronym that will be looking into, into the ongoing conversations and there's more follow-through there. We're going to make sure that we're looking at this and that's a priority as we're, we're through this year.
Anyway, that Mr. Boss and Kevin Kozak were working even this week to try and.
Yeah, problem solving and seeing what's possible.
Again, it's, you know, budget related and that, but they were trying to.
Yeah.
To work some additional things out.
Scheduling magic.
I think they've already got some good.
Things in place for next year. So we're keeping our fingers crossed.
But we just want to make sure that we know what it is before we're.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So, thank you very much. Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I wasn't going to speak, so Justine St. John. And the reason I want to talk was actually because what I think is incredibly amazing about Maynard is the fact that we turn kids out that are not afraid to stand up and they're not afraid to advocate for themselves and they're not afraid to try new things. And that is truly what makes our district completely special and I think that we all need to remember that, so.
Thank you, Justine.
And that just made me tear up. Like, what is, what is going on?
It's all Michelle's fault.
I'm still trying to compose myself over here.
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm Renee Duprah, so, no, Anne's my daughter. I did want to push the whole retention thing. A lot of eighth grade has applied to Asabat. They offer an immense amount of programs that we don't even have.
Yep.
And then you go and look at their music program compared to ours. We go to Disney, we go to Washington DC, we're doing districts, Great East, which these kids work really hard for, especially with Kozak and from fourth to eighth, and to get that base. I played, you know, in band from fourth all the way to 12th and I'm proud because she's able to get up. This is hard for me. So she's really good at doing this kind of stuff, but it's important because you're going to lose so many kids who, I know a few in their grade who are really strong band kids and really strong students who are going to Asabat. They're leaving. Their class is one of the smallest classes because they have lost so many to AMSA and to Asabat. If you keep losing that music program, you're going to just have kids leaving here left and right. I love Maynard. I have four kids and right now they're all in Fowler and all in the band program. And getting them up to leave the house at 7:15 to get into the school is really hard, especially with kids who have some issues getting up and getting them out the door in time. And then to have them get there and there's not as much time for practice and stuff like that. So I'm really proud of these kids and, you know, and there's a bunch more who, you know, as soon as they heard there was an issue, they're all on their phones texting to each other.
We received a lot of letters too.
Yes.
So we did what you're.
And still are. And this eighth grade is.
Still are.
Such a strong class for that kind of stuff.
Mail, we got some from them. Alumni, we've been receiving letters from alumni, so.
Wonderful program, so I just want to let you guys know. The retention thing I think is like one of the biggest things though.
I don't think you're going to find one person here who is not hearing and that piece at all and taking all the efforts that, I mean, just a lot that we can continue to make to try to see how we can make it better. That is, I know for me, a personal goal.
Yeah.
And I know it's shared amongst many folks here.
Because it's a, it's a great program and just to keep it going would be the best thing for all my kids, so, and plus all the other kids.
Yeah, yeah. Not just our kids, but yeah.
Just segueing on what Justine had said, because when, when you guys all go to Disney and you go to Washington DC, resoundingly, we hear back how respectful, how just, just terrific kids performing and just the, you know, the way that they represent Maynard is something to really be proud of, so.
We hear it a lot, just so you all know.
We hear it a lot.
Yeah. So I don't want to keep anyone from, if there's anyone else who would like to say anything, but we do continue to have a full agenda, so there's, we'll be ready to move on unless someone felt like there was something that they haven't heard said that they felt like they needed to say. Okay, so we are going to move on. So we are very grateful. We have our town administrator here, Greg Johnson, and he is going to just talk to us a little bit about where things stand in relation to some things that are happening. Do you want me to just read your report? What do you want to do? Do you want to just give a little update, whatever you want? We can do it however you'd like.
So good evening, I am Greg Johnson, the town administrator for the town of Maynard. I've been in office for a year and a half or so. This is my first school committee meeting. I have to share this sentiment, I'm a little nervous. I'm actually probably more nervous to meet this group than I am probably every town meeting. But so be it, you do a lot of good work, so I'm here to answer questions that you have. But I can kind of lead into, if you give me the topic, I'll.
Yeah, so we got just where things stand with the MOU for the facilities director, just the update.
Sure.
So why don't I just lead off by saying, we certainly get that this is just more of like a status update. We, if there are, if we do have questions, we certainly don't expect that, if you don't have the answers, you don't have the answers right now. But just to be able to, we get the update and then we can consider from there, part of it is planning. I know there's some timing that we have to consider around the roof and when we need to make some decisions. And so having you right here is just very helpful because you, so I appreciate your being here. And eventually, I would imagine, as we're moving into people and their places and in their roles and they starting to get used to them, it wouldn't even, we wouldn't even need to, we'll have those mechanisms in place, so thank you for being here.
Okay, you're welcome. So for anyone who's not familiar with what the topics she was referring to, she said MOU, which is memorandum of understanding, which is kind of synonymous with memorandum of agreement, but either way, at the last annual town meeting, we had the article passed to allow for certain shared administrative functions between the school district and the town. That allowed us to move forward with the plan to have a shared facilities management position between the district and the town. Until that point, we'd kind of been doing it, maybe not the most appropriately. We'd had the facilities management position as a shared title for our DPW director, Director We'd had the facilities management position as a shared title for our DPW director, Director of Public Works. And then we had an assistant facilities manager, but in, in, really, in function, that assistant facilities manager was serving all the roles, as, as well as oversight of maintenance and facilities management on the school's side. But we made things legit through the town meeting. And however, we had some personnel changes. And so that also gave us an opportunity to kind of examine what kind of role we do want, and properly so. What, what could be the new agreement and relationship between the town and the school district for this facilities role? However, nothing is ever straightforward like that. So as we started looking into it and as to who did what for both sides, it gets a little tricky that I can't even go into now because it has to do with collective bargaining agreements between the custodial union and, and other unions and personnel. But that being said, I am encouraged, I think, I think legal counsel for the school district and legal counsel for the town have been cooperating, communicating, but nothing works that quickly and, at least not in the town bureaucracy side of the house, but it is progressing. And, and I hope to be able to have the legalities worked out soon enough that we can move forward with hiring. However, the concept is to have the superintendent's office do the hiring, because 75% of that person's time would be working for the school district, because you have the majority of facilities, at, at least for square footage wise, and, and the complexities of which. There's about 15 town facilities total, including the three schools. So that means there's 12 on our side. But some of those are small pump houses, or the, you know, firefighters are pretty handy, so they don't, they don't have to require a lot of work. But still, the, the schools are certainly, the, the majority of resources are devoted to them, personnel wise, as well as, as, as funding as well. So you still have your own maintenance budget, as I hope you do now, and you should still be able to devote resources to that. However, this, this shared position will help manage those resources and consult with the town facilities and to be able to move forward with that. We may not have that same title, by the way, but those were worked out with the legalities. That's the general concept. So 75% of the time, we work for you, 25% I get them.
So we, we received the job description and, and all of that. If we've got like questions, then maybe just run them through Mary Jane to go to legal? I mean, you know, some of them are like basic, like what we keep talking about, we, when we've given up the position to the town, we gave up our equipment. So now do we have to go and invest in all that, that equipment, or does it come back? That's a big one for me, because, you know, because that's a lot of money that we don't have.
So conceptually, the, the equipment is shared in the first place, so although you may not see that directly, I'm just saying, in concept, the idea was it was the same equipment. So we took it, so to speak, but it's the same crew that, that, that mows the park, that mows the football field.
Okay, because it was my understanding that we had some of our own equipment before.
All right, so be it. So I would, I would, I would, thinking about right now, literally, because you brought it up, so I will give it a reply, which is, this director of building operations, I suppose, I would allow that person to sort of do an assessment as to the inventory that they have, both on, on the school side as well as the town facilities, see what needs there are and what needs there, and what resources we currently do have. I don't think it's a matter of we took it and they took it. I think this is actually an indication that it's much more shared than that.
I want to just also quickly, yeah, hold on, just Mary, just Mauro and I are, have asked Mary Jane to, because we were part of the negotiating subcommittee, to just keep us looped in so that we don't have, you know, as much as information is being shared. Because we do have some questions from the Agreement of Future Committee on, on some things, and so you're not getting a whole bunch of, array of different questions to consolidate it and ensure the communication channels, because at some point, this will be presented to the school committee for, for approval. It's not going to be something that is going to just happen. And so I think from my perspective, and I believe Mauro, is that having some visibility in the discussions that, as they're playing, will help us, when we come to vote, be more informed of, of how you got to the end result. I think in, in knowing how we can either, if there's back and forth, just to have that visibility into how that's working. Does that make sense?
It does, but I, I would recommend that you go through the superintendent's office.
Yeah, so working with Mary Jane with that.
So what I'll do then is, rather than bore everybody tonight, I'm gonna, I'll get my questions to you guys and to Mary Jane, just, yeah.
Yeah, and I was just gonna say that when we're, we're talking about the equipment, it wasn't necessarily, I think, the equipment to mow. I just, in the job description, it talks about the facilities person either delegating or doing some of the immediate grounds work around the buildings. And so basically what we were saying, if, even if he were to delegate it, our custodians don't actually have that equipment anymore. So that's really what it was about, it was just, can we get that snow blower back so that they can take care of it? Or, you know, the hedge clipper type of thing, not every single equipment, because we understand that the mowing and the grounds work is done by the grounds department.
Absolutely.
So that's just, it was the little stuff, and it was more so, I think, our custodial staff was worried if that was going to come back on them, that they weren't going to have access to that stuff.
That makes sense.
And then I guess the only other thing that I knew to loop in about was, I remember Sarah Spata for our legal, that's gonna, it's gonna end up going through her as well, right?
She re-did, that's, that's, yeah, that's, so that's where the legal is.
And then now it's on you.
Right.
The point we got is we got our first draft, I had to make a look at it, and they sent it back, and that's why I sent you guys. And that's really all we've had at that point.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, great.
What is, what is your timeline? Do you anticipate that all of this might be able to, so I know that if you had...
Is that a big question?
I know, I didn't know that was a hard one. Just thinking that, because it would involve hiring the facilities director and thinking about our future projects, how that might align.
I would love to say as soon as possible.
Yeah.
But, I mean, this is one of probably five or six different labor-related issues that I have my one labor council person working on. So, and I'm about to start negotiations with two new unions, so as soon as possible.
So is the town hiring the facilities director?
No, we are.
No, with consultation, I would recommend with my DPW director.
Okay, yeah, right. Okay, great. All right, so we're good with that one. And then the other thing was Green Meadow, the, the, I think the main thing is the roof report.
The survey, right, the one that I think, we just got it back, so I don't think anyone's really had a lot of time to digest. Yeah, it's hot off the front.
But I think the thing that I'd love to talk about, this is what makes sense to everyone, is just making sure, I saw there were dates flying around via email, and I kept reading them and trying to like, I have to finish my work. What does that email say? I have to finish my work. So, so I'd love to talk that through for a minute.
Just describe my day. So I would, so let me give a little bit of background. Over the course of the summer, as we were doing the renovation work, it was identified that the roof needs some addressing. So through the direction of the board of selectmen, under the advisement of the school committee, I was directed to do requests for proposals to hire a design firm to do a feasibility study on the roof as phase one for a complete, what's called an envelope study, which is everything else of the external, of the building, as a phase two. And to do the entire roof. So we did that, all right, I, I did that as the puran officer for the town.
Thank you.
Welcome. So then I did the, we got the results, we moved forward with the firm, CBI Consulting, and they conducted that work. Over the course of a couple of weeks, it was a little bit delayed because of the snow and holidays and whatnot, so I finally got it Monday, Tuesday, sent it out within minutes afterwards to superintendent's office, yourself and a number of other individuals, as well as my five bosses, and so that everyone could see the results. So now we're moving to timeline. So based, based on those results, which does give, in the executive portion of that report, a series of recommendations, can't remember how many they are, but there's a range of the amount of work that could be done. So based on, on the testing and the sort of recommendations that they have. So I have a policy degree, so I, I couldn't tell you what my recommendation would be, but that's, that's, that's your job, is, is you give direction. This is what I imagine, this is what I advise, is that, take a look at that, get a sense of, of what you, what you envision for the building, the lifespan of the building, the functionality of the building, and then see what sort of, of those options, what sort of fits your vision for what you need out of that building. And then you would give your, your recommendation to the board of selectmen, because they would have, because either way, that's going to cost money to do all that work. So they, I'm about to submit my budget according to the town charter on the 21st, so after that, it is their budget. So if you, if you, whatever you want done has to be appropriated, and they, they submit the budget to the town meeting for that appropriation. So ultimately, it would be voted on at town meeting to appropriate whatever the funds needed to do the work that you recommend.
And just for some context, a little bit for, because I know this is really recently evolving, I, I did forward it over, and I think you had already possibly to the Agreement of Future Committee.
I did, the chairman.
Yeah, and we have, we've already engaged with them, so they can, within their committee, provide recommendations that they feel deliberate, they can provide to us. The expected timeline is around the 27th of January, that we'll be able to get that information. And then we'll be able to be deliberate on the 30th at our, our next meeting. I've spoken with Josh, he's expecting that he will be on hand to help us with our conversations. Loosely, there was some questions about maybe, for me, because I think the MSBA process also may factor into, how are we thinking about paying for a roof, and how do we gauge that conversation about cost if we also have this parallel consideration with the MSBA?
Correct.
And how that aligns. So I don't know the answer to that. I think Josh will be able to...
Well, actually, Lider and I can have a, because we, with the budget subcommittee meeting the other night, the, the three boards, we had extensive conversations about that too, so we can kind of update you in a little while about conversations that came out of that, so.
Right, so I, I, from the town direction, as far as what I think a town desire, so I'm an MSBA?
Yep, and that's, yep, that's the conversation that we can have in a little while.
Okay.
Do you mean the town is in, like, capital T?
No, I'm talking about public interest.
Oh, I see, oh, I thought you meant the town board.
And that's, I, I agree, you should be thinking about what town meeting would interest.
I think we, I think considering what the public interest and the public appetite with exploring the MSBA process, what the impact of that means financially, what the impact of all the different options for the, the survey came back, I think that that's something that more stakeholders need to be involved in that decision make. I don't know the right way to go about it, but I think it, it needs to be more of a broader conversation that we take into account interest besides just our own.
I, I did also share the information. It is a public document, so I shared it also with the Capital Planning Committee and Finance Committee.
Great, thank you. The, the thing that occurs to me in the context of that is one of the, a short, I guess sometimes, you may notice, I go short term, long term. So short term would be the goal of being able to have the Green Meadow wing open for, for the fall. And I think we look at that, and then we look at...
Well, I think that was one of the, the options, and I don't know if you, oh, the other part before I...
I'm deeply impressed. I started to open that, and I'm like, oh, I cannot comprehend this right now.
The other part was trying to see, I know part of the agreement was that CBI would be able to speak with us.
Oh, that's right, so thank you for...
And are they able to come on the 30th as well?
You, I recommend you reach out to them and schedule.
So Mary Jane was gonna put it for that.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think that would be great for the community and for us to get that information. Yep, yeah, because I think if we're gonna be deciding on something, hearing, having them on hand for that.
And I, I think it's smart to have that, those preliminary meetings, whether it be the Green Meadow Future Committee, whoever, ahead of time, so you kind of have prepared more for going into that meeting with them.
The other part too, and I quickly read over the recommendation, the, it, it didn't seem to break out maybe as smaller project as I would have thought it would, as far as roofing, it, like, wings versus, so...
I was so pleased with that number. It came in exactly where you thought it was going to, 2 million.
Yeah, yeah. I think they did, they, they did it as small a thing as they possibly could, because anything less would have been irresponsible.
So I think Josh, Josh will, they'll provide, the Agreement of Future Committee will provide their recommendations. I think there was some conversation about that.
I was very pleased.
Okay, so more to come.
Very good. I'm not ready right now to talk about the contents of it.
Yeah, no.
We're not really either, so.
And then the other thing, so then for timing, so we do, say CBI can come on the 30th.
Sure.
Then the next BOs meeting is the 4th.
It's the 4th, and there's another 18th. So the, so the, the pressure is in preparation for annual town meeting. Absolutely, but, but I'll be, at that time, it's, it's more of a preparation, it's like a presentation from the town administrator as my recommended budget, plus whatever new information's coming between next Tuesday and that time. But it, it's a, it's a, it's a good venue for having these, these sort of big conversations, and, and we did some preliminary conversations at the budget subcommittee. But it would be nice to have your recommendation ahead of time going into that, so it could be shared.
Yeah, okay.
But it, but it doesn't detract necessarily, like it, there, there is an opportunity to have a similar conversation with the board of selectmen, because within the CBI's contract, they are also obligated to go to a board of select meeting. Now, they could go to more, but within, within the confines of what we paid them, it's two meetings. And I would recommend considering a joint meeting with the school committee and board of selectmen, so that you can directly tell them.
Right.
You don't have to do like that, you can send a liaison, you can send a report, but...
But that's, I appreciate your recommendation.
And although, all, all that doesn't have to have it at the same meeting, so you don't have to have CBI come talk to the selectmen. They may, I can't speak for the selectmen, so maybe they'll tell me they don't want to have you and CBI at the same time. Maybe they want to have CBI come and talk to them, and then hear from you guys afterwards, but I'll have to wait for them to tell me.
So what I might do is email Chairman De Silva to just think, look at timeline and consider, if we, if it would be very helpful for us by the 8th to be able to give a recommendation, if we are able, then looking back from there and when their meetings, and if they, if they want CBI to be at the same time as us, that they want to join with us, so we could talk some of that through.
You can do that.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
That's fine.
And Justine's here, so she's been hearing, so she can, I'll copy you on that. All right, great. Anything else?
What's the deadline that we have to have, like, a recommendation?
Yeah, 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 so thank you for asking. So annual town meeting is kind of rigid, because it's, it's, we have, by town charter obligations, we have to get notifications out, and then so on and so forth, and publications, all that. And if you give enough time for the finance committee to review all the, all the recommended articles and whatnot, we've already started the process, giving the selectmen the opportunity to, to give consent to some of those articles going ahead. The deadline for town departments and committees and boards and whatnot is March 3rd to, to my office, so that I can have it prepared for the selectmen to consider. And because soon as, soon as I get them, I also give them to the finance committee so they can see them, just as like a courtesy, but then it's not officially sent to the finance committee until after my selectmen approve those, what we call controls, like the draft, draft articles. So that, that doesn't, it's, it's pretty tight, so you have a lot of work to do between then and then.
What else is new with us, Greg? You know? All right, all right, very good. Anything else?
The only thing I had about, was about the MSBA, and I mean, I know we kind of talked to it a little bit, but I know that there has, it came out, and I saw the letter of interest, and wanted to, I don't know if you have information you want to share now, but I, since Greg's here, I know community, there's a lot of community appetite for understanding where the town position lies with that.
So again, are you asking the capital T, like town administrator? Because I can't speak for my bosses.
I can, yes, I'm, you are here, so I'm asking you.
I don't know, are you prepared to speak to that? Because I don't want to...
I'll tell you what I've been briefed, which is, and I don't know this to be true, because I've not had a, a direct conversation with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA. My understanding is that they, they do, and I understand this as a state agency, they don't want to be the end-all, be-all. Like, they don't want to be, they want, they want districts, and this is why I would assume, that they want districts to continue to improve on their buildings. So similar to the fire station, we've been trying to move forward with building a new fire station, but that doesn't mean I neglect the current fire station. One, I have firefighters who live there, and then, and then two, that'd just be a bad steward of that, of that town resource. But I suspect the MSBA has the same expectations for the district. So whether it be the, the minimal recommendations or to the max recommendations from this particular report, but I think you should continue to invest in your facilities, and I think that they would want to see that partnership. You know, they, if they're going to invest so much in the district, they want to see that the money's going to good use.
And we can answer that. Actually, one of the things that they did mention to us as we were going through this process is, it is our obligation to make sure that our buildings are maintained and to be ready to move forward on that. So we really are obligated to, to continue to make our buildings, you know, habitable.
Maintain them, yeah, yeah, safe and keep them up to date.
They actually look favorably on the fact that we even went out for the feasibility study and continuing to look at improving the existing.
It's a good investment from the state, because you, because you're good partners in that. But more so, I, I imagine, maybe through the statement of interest or however, we can just report to them how much money we've already invested into that. And, and similar to the fire station, the more I invest into a, a building that is, I'm, I can't keep up with the building maintenance for that particular facility, and I would suspect similar with the age of the Green Meadow School. And it has to break even at some point, so.
Right, right. Okay. And then, so you'll have more, what we can talk about for the subcommittee in relation to that.
Yeah, it'll just be brief, because we're gonna have to have a much bigger conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But speaking of maintaining the buildings, because when we got the new high school, it was loud and clear, that's, you know, you guys are not known for maintaining your buildings, and it was a detriment at that time, so we had to, oh, yeah. So we had to make some serious investments.
Good, that's, no, and that's actually, actually, I think that's advantageous to the district and the, and the town in general, that you've, pretty recently have had this experience. But I would also encourage, and I've done this at budget subcommittee meetings, I, I encourage this body to look to other districts that have done it recently. I happen to be an active resident, we just voted to, to do a new school. So they are recently just gone through this exact same process. So for those of you or any of the community that weren't there when the high school was being considered and built and whatnot, just look to other districts that are doing it right now. There's probably a handful in this tiny area.
What is the timeline for the next step in this?
So that's a good question. I would refer to the, I would refer to the superintendent's office.
Okay.
We are waiting for numbers from the town, so that we can communicate.
Okay, wait. He bounced it back to me.
That was our understanding, right, Michelle?
That was an interesting pivot there.
No, no, so, so we are trying to tie in the, what is owed back to the MSBA and with our, our annual town meeting and special town meeting calendar. So if we, so we could prepare it either way, so...
So it means a funds commitment, is what I'm understanding.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I could translate that, okay.
I thought you were referring to whether we have to commit those funds in the spring at the annual town meeting, or we could wait until, generally do it at a special town meeting in the fall.
Okay. I didn't know if they required it, like, at a certain time?
They do.
So they, they're looking for a vote at the Maytown meeting, I believe, right?
So I, I, that's what I initially believed, but I, I think I might be confused. Either way, we'll, we'll verify that.
Right, I think we asked for it to be, to possibly push it out a little bit more when we talked to the MSBA after our initial conversation with them.
Okay.
And they, they had still suggested that, that we were looking for a May timeline. And the reason for that May timeline is because it actually ended up working for the conversation that we had had about when, you know, the tax increase may hit and all of those things. We were a little off on our, we were guestimating when we were there, because we weren't MSBA experts.
Good point.
So when they finally gave us the timeline, it seemed to fit better. And especially along the lines that we had already discussed between the, the town and the school department, what would be favorable.
Yep.
That the May timeline was, would still fit best for us. There is a leeway, which we talked about, if it comes down to that we are not 100% prepared for that Maytown meeting vote, that we could have a special town meeting in the fall to vote on it.
And we could do earlier.
We don't like lose the opportunity.
You do not, no, there is a timeline, you have, what's it, 190?
I can't, don't...
I forget the actual time. You have a certain timeframe that you need to vote on, vote on the feasibility study, in which starts the clock. So there is a timeframe, but both the Maytown meeting and the fall, if we were to have to push it out in the fall, I believe still fell into that timeframe.
That might be my understanding.
One of the things we're waiting for the town on is really, I think we had a discussion about, is really talking to our, the town, the people in the town about, what is the, the investment going to cost them, and, you know, what is their tax base, if it's something we're working with.
It's like, it's just, and like, we talked about, it's just being able to have the, like, numbers, you know, if we estimate the project to be this much, this is what it's going to affect you, these are the times. This is when it will hit your bill, blah, blah, blah. So it's more like promotional materials.
Yes, that's what I'm waiting for.
The more people are informed of what the actual...
So they're more informed of what they're voting for, impact, and that's, that's critical.
The more that they're informed of what the actual number is going to be on their bill, and what they are going to get out of it, is going to help us, you know, garner the support that we need in order to get it passed. Now, the first vote is, is, I don't want to say merely, but it is just for the feasibility study portion of the, you actually do, you still can vote for the feasibility study, have the feasibility, feasibility study, and then when it comes time to vote for the actual appropriating the money for the building, you may or may not move forward with it, depending on what, if, what you feel about your feasibility study and what the support is in the town at that time. So the first initial vote is just for the portion of the, the steps for just to get the feasibility study ball rolling.
So that sounds what we're looking to do, working with the town, how do we...
It could be May or date, they suggest that we still stayed with the May timeline, but there is a little bit of leeway in the timeframe that we have to vote on it, that it may possibly be a special town meeting.
That's right. But if, if, as you said, if the community, if you feel the community is prepared to move forward in May, then, then you do it in May.
And that's what MSBA kind of advised us on, because then it, it doesn't put us in a really tight, tight timeline to move forward, so.
But I think you'll get a sense of that sort of, how it'll, you know, like, how, how much the, the town is prepared in the course of the next couple of weeks, so especially at the February 8th meeting. I think you'll, because you'll hear from both the finance committee, board of selectmen, capital planning committee.
Yeah, and when we're saying, when Mary Jane was saying that we are waiting for numbers from the town, it was, it was really just for us to be able to put out some sort of promotional material, so that we can start to, you know...
Yeah, I didn't mean to throw it out to Greg.
No, it's fine. So I do have it as placeholders in the capital improvement plan, the five-year plan. It's just placeholders, it's just like, pretty conservative numbers.
Yep. Yeah, and we, and Greg has looked at other districts, and so have we, at what the feasibility study actually costs them, right? That's, that's what we're getting, that's where we were...
I've done a little bit of research, but I'm not really an expert.
Yeah, I think, well, maybe Jennifer did, because I remember somebody had, had the numbers.
She did a lot of the work.
Jennifer had all that, and she has a nice timeline.
Yeah, so, you know, that information and what the actual feasibility study may, may run us, based on what other districts have.
And just to be aware, our, the candidate that we are moving into negotiations with, Brian Haas, he did an MSBA building project as a principal for the high school, so, and Air Shirley. So, and then he also, he did a building project for an eighth grade wing. So, and then he also, he did a building project for eighth grade wing at Abby Kelly too, not through MSBA, but so he's.
Oh.
He's done several, and apparently from what the community said, he was excellent in communicating and working through those and everything that he did in relation to.
That's great.
Just a question before I lose your.
So we're gonna, we're, we're past time?
Just one more question.
Okay.
Is there anything with the roof that you've, the timeline, the projected timeline was summer project?
That's right.
We're still looking for that target, right? I just want to clarify that.
Oh, absolutely.
For public interest as well.
No, the RFP was written with that as the deadline, and then when I started interviewing applicants, people who submitted their proposals, I said, I need, I need confidence that you can make this timeline work. And CBI said, yes.
Okay.
So.
There is a timeline in that.
Yeah, I did, yeah, I said, that's great.
We'll pin CBI down when they're here.
That's it.
No, I, I think they've, they've done a number of these projects, they'll be prepared for your questions.
Yeah, yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I hope it wasn't too scary.
Yeah.
No desk, no desk, that was a little weird. No, all right, no problem, thank you.
All right.
All right, thanks a lot, we appreciate it. Okay, so luckily I know that we have a little padding further down the agenda, so we're gonna keep moving here. All right. So now we're on to the school year calendar. And we have some options here. And.
Can I, can I just ask, don't we usually do this in April?
We did it in June.
Did we?
We did it really.
Yeah, so that people can make.
April is very late.
So we started last year doing it very early and then amending as we went, because in order to do the other things we were asking them to do, like plan updates and plan when they were going to have the, be able to plan everything out in relation, they needed to do, they needed to work out the calendar early.
This is pretty typical for the districts I've been in. So, you know, February is, this is a little bit early, but February typically is when it happens. So we sent out a survey, actually Colleen sent out a survey, and she worked with, and Jennifer worked for the Professional Development Committee, because in the collective bargain agreement, the teachers really are asked for some input in, when the first day of school starts. So Jennifer met with her Professional Development Committee, and they come up with these two specific calendars, and then Colleen sent out a, a survey on the calendars. And if you take a look at the options, there's really not much difference, it's just a matter of do they want to start the last week of August, or do they want to go the, the week before that? Option two was the one that actually had the most, the most.
Favourable review.
I can't talk today, I don't know what is going on. So that, that's what, but again, I also had Colleen do a little bit of research, but people are still doing this right now, so, and who, or other people are starting, so this is really about the same time everybody else, right now it's kind of split. So it's really a matter of what we'd like to do moving forward. So do we want to go to school, the teachers come in on the 31st, or do we want them to come on the 20, or the 27th?
So this year they came Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Like that was a little bit different than what we've done.
I mean, I, I'm thinking about like what might be going on over the summer in projects and thinking about what happened this year, I'm almost think, I mean, option two seemed to be a favorite, but starting a little bit later was something, because if there is any possibility of an issue, you don't have to, you know, it's a lot more scheduling considerations with staff and families, starting a little bit later. I mean, I don't like that we end later, but.
Well, I actually was concerned about the, the project, the building project, to be honest with you. We get that early enough, I don't think that, you know, really, I would think the hope of the family could work around that, but I was more concerned, even though I also don't like to start that, to finish that late in the year, but I do think really having a little bit of leeway.
That cushion.
Yeah. So, because I've been in many, many schools that have many building projects, the last one I was in was supposed to be done, and it wasn't done until October, so. So I, as much as I'd like to say I'd love to go earlier, again, I'd like to support what the teachers like to do, but I also would like to have that time to, to see whatever we decide to do with the roof, to have a little bit of cushion there.
And I, I, I do like that the, it's, I mean, also both of them have this, but starting, well, I, although I have a question about the, the start date, because I know we keep fluctuating a little bit Tuesday, Wednesday, what are the, what is the thought that's gone into that change through the years? Is, is that something, there's a reasoning for?
It depends on what, I guess, they have to offer for professional development. Do they want to do two days professional development before school starts, or do they want to split the full days out throughout the year? And that's kind of how that works. And I guess it's just when they take the vote, that's what, exactly. Typically, many school districts, because I really state that the first day of school can, cannot be the Tuesday before, you know, can only be this date. So that's typical language, so this is a little different than what I'm used to. But I, I think really it depends on what PDs are planned and, and how many PD days they want throughout the year, and they really prefer to have the PDs throughout the year rather than ahead of time. And that's what the rationale was on this particular scenario.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if they're, I can make a motion and just have discussion?
Are you asking us to pick an option?
That is the school committee's.
Yeah, we have.
That's your, your, you're supposed to pick an option.
Okay. Great, so.
We can also make amendments if something happens during the year, something at back, say we're looking.
That was what I was going to say.
Absolutely positive.
Amendments, considerations, there's, I know there's, there's.
And, and just to, yeah, sorry, I wanted to add something else to that, too.
Okay. Go ahead, you add what you're going to add.
No, no, no.
The, I know there's consideration right now, too, there's a meeting to talk about holiday.
The name.
And the naming of the holidays, but that can be in a future amendment, so.
Because I know that that was somewhere.
I don't know how that's going to move forward, but just keeping, making sure that we know that option's still open.
Is that all we have to?
Really, just hold the start date. Get some preliminary founder out.
Great. So.
So that's all we're, we're.
Just the first day.
So we're not actually.
Change per the Professional Development Committee, things might pop up and need to be changed.
So this is really for the start date?
Teacher start date and student start date.
So do we just make a motion then to?
Between option one and option two.
Option to start date, like specify its start date?
So that means that we'll be doing another round of looking at the, the schedule of the, the calendar later.
This is what, this is what the Professional Development Committee has come up with for PD days. Election Day will be a PD day, school will be closed, and then the early releases are scattered, we took this year's calendar and pretty much rolled out, there's one change to when a PD day and early release date fell compared to last year to the next year. Something like a school event that might happen, like in the past we were running to, oh, that's graduation day or prom day, you've got to change that, although I think we have that covered this year with this.
Okay. But generally, the one you vote for is really what you'll go for unless there's some sort of change. But generally, you're not going to keep bringing this up month after month, so.
So that, I do want to point out one thing before we do take even a vote around the calendar in general. I, I heard and just want to make, make sure this is, I know this was on someone's radar at the time, but that nature's classroom, making sure that does not happen, or any field trips that, happening over like Jewish holidays. Yeah, so I just wanted to reiterate that again, because I've heard about that, and then also. As I, I don't know what, I thought, I thought I read it at some point, and I haven't read it before this meeting, but consideration on tests for holidays and either not having them on holidays that were, that were optional for people to be able to take, or not having, not having them. For students, having tests. Or like a, a test in the classroom. So I think that that's another thing, just to be, make sure, I, I've heard that that happened last year, so just making sure that that's not happening. It's kind of an aside from this particular calendar. And that and nature's classroom, but they're both like, yeah, curriculum related to the calendar. Thank you, that's it.
I will make notes and to double check that, though, because I did remember that, but I don't think I checked, so I'll double check that.
So, so what if, can we just make a motion to, to accept the start date for option two in the Professional Development with consideration that it may need to be revisited for any ongoing or future conversations regarding holidays?
No, because I think if you accept the calendar, we can always change the nature's classroom or whatever it be.
Right, but that might not be the only thing that might be wanting to be revisited.
And it can be amended at any time.
Anytime.
So we don't need to worry about saying what we vote, but we'll amend it, it can be, we could choose to amend it in April, May, June, July.
Exactly, exactly, you can change it.
We won't do that, because.
So for example, I know we did last year, we had to change.
There were several times we had to change things because of something, yeah. So the bottom line is we're, I'll entertain a motion for a start date for the teachers and for the students, option one versus option two.
I will make a motion to accept the start date for option two for the Mayor Public School Calendar, year 2020 to 2021, that sounded weird saying that. Okay, second?
A second.
Any discussion?
No, but I would like to say that I like the colors.
Yeah.
And it's so much easier to read than.
Can we also add in school committee meetings for everyone? Is there a way, like they had it in like red? Yeah, because I think it would just need to be on all in one calendar, so people can see when those are too.
Yeah, I think, I think the.
Yeah.
Here, do you want to look?
You can look, we can show you.
Let me, let me say what the dates are, so option, option one is to clarify, well, we have a motion on the table, so.
Yeah, let's just continue with what we're doing, they can take a look at it.
Okay. So.
Yeah, it's not official.
Just the start date.
So don't spread it around.
So there's a motion, it's been seconded, any discussion?
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right. Excellent. All right, so we'll let them take a look at that. So the next thing is policy review. So Policy Subcommittee, we took, they, very productive, just going for it. So I'm going to let Lydia take over, because I was there for a portion that I ended up doing. Sorry, I think I surprised you by that.
Yeah, a little, that's all right.
I can, I can certainly help continue with it, too.
The first question I have, Colleen, the documents that you put in the folder for the policies, where did those come from? Were those the ones that we had been looking for, or were those the ones that I edited?
I found those in Colleen Moore's document, I had paper copies.
Okay. Okay, so those aren't necessarily the ones that I updated. And so.
Do you have this to share with us right now?
I, yeah, I do, let me, let me get them.
We're just going to be discussing this, right?
So what, so what you essentially.
Right, we are only discussing the three, but the three that are there are not the three that I worked on. And so I don't know if.
Can we table it and just?
Well, because we had, we had discussed revising the ones that we had.
Right.
And adding the MSBA wording and updating them, and I did that in a different folder, these are not those.
It's the same policies, just not the updated ones, is what she's saying.
So it's these three policies, but she has an updated version that is not in our current online folder for this school committee meeting.
Those are the ones we put in there.
Oh.
Whatever you gave me on paper, that's what I found.
What did you give her?
I don't have access to.
The shared folder that we made?
No.
Oh, then that's, those are the updated ones, then.
No, I don't think that was, was that shared.
All right, so I think.
So maybe we should table this?
Yes.
I think we needed to. Crowdfunding, so I haven't even seen the other one. These are the ones we had.
All right, so we'll have to talk about it later and make sure that they're in the, in.
Because these are the ones we talked about with Beth Lynn, the three that were there with Beth Lynn.
Right, what, I think, I think what the confusion is, is that these three was what was discussed, but Colleen didn't up, didn't put, upload the three, these three policies with the updates that Lydia had.
So we haven't seen them before, ahead of time.
So it's the same three policies, but they're.
Just an updated version.
Not the updated.
So I promised that we're going to get this process down, this is the first time we're doing it, so we're going to have it down. So for next time around.
Part of the problem is, is we couldn't even locate the digital files of the policies, and it took us, and finally, Colleen found them. So we were just referring to basically notes and paper versions that Beth Lynn and other people had, so.
So what, what's really good is that that's going to change now.
Yes, it is.
We're going to start having them all, the, the one thing that we can vote on tonight that we think we needed to just make sure everyone was, was on board with was switching the.
Yes.
The, the numbering to the same standard.
Formatting, the indexing.
Yeah, the indexing to the same as the mask. So I don't think we need to vote on that, so without objection, we will do that. So that will be something that Colleen can work on, so that we'll have, so that everything actually, it's our, our convention for indexing is weird. And, and it's not, so we want to get that in line, that will help us with then as we're uploading new policies, we'll, it'll be a one.
And I can work with you, Colleen, on that.
And at some point, it'll be easy for us to just go through when we're looking for a policy, because you can get there.
Yeah, it's not like that right now.
Oh, we still haven't found it. We still haven't, we still.
So that's, that's what we're doing, is we're going through. Is making sure everything gets cleaned up so it's easy for everyone, because everyone should be able to easily access and see them.
So table, all right.
I have a question, why we have to table it if it's just a first read and you upload, because we haven't seen it, the updates. No, I know, but we're, we're not voting, this is just a first read that we're going to be reading.
Well, because it was, it, we wanted to upload it, have people, have, having had people read it prior to the meeting right now, where then people would suggest, okay, I like this part, but maybe we could rephrase this part, and then I would go back and edit it, and then we would vote the next time around, so.
Yeah, and if there is something more, often if there's something more extensive, so you might say like, I there's, I want to, I'm going to give you some language for this, then you could email it. So we would just kind of, having the opportunity to kind of talk about the kinds of changes you're looking for, we wouldn't necessarily make them here on the spot, you might email them, we might, right, but then at least, but not having had a chance to look at it.
For instance, the bullying prevention one that we had on the books here is far more detail oriented and, and, and really narrows things down, whereas the mask one is, is sort of broader and more general. And we had a discussion as to, okay, which is better, because if, if you get into the finite details of things, then what if you don't get every single, you know, type of event that, that needs to be covered? But on the other hand, it was tailored to our district and the issues that we tend to see specifically, and so that was one of the ones that we really, we wanted to compare and contrast and have a productive conversation about that, whether or not we really.
But that, yeah.
And all of the MASC ones, they are vetted through attorneys.
Well, as I was just saying, like, whatever, are we changing, are we, they all going to be vetted anyway through attorneys after we finish? We probably will have to, if we're going to change, if we're not going to use the MASC ones, I would.
If we don't use the MASC ones, we will have to have lawyers read them.
I would think that would be in our best interest to be honest with you, but if we're gonna use MASC, they've already been approved. I don't think that, that's what many school districts do, but if we're, or something we, I mean, I think, something relatively minor, I don't think it's that big of a deal. But if we're gonna put a statement in, you know, we may wanna run something by...
Yeah, the bullying prevention one is drastically different. They're...
Right.
So I think the, the one that was online was a policy procedure, so it was taking it and moving to the next step with some of those.
Right.
And that was what was on as a, and...
We also have two different things, um, just to be clear. So, policy is supposed to be generalized.
Yeah.
Where the administrative procedure is supposed to be the step-by-step.
Yeah, but what was online, when we went and clicked on the link?
I, I told, I've been through those, I get it.
Me too, because I've looked at it, some of them, they're like overlapping and, yeah.
Yeah.
No, we're, we're trying to sort them out and, and better categorize them.
So I think we did accomplish that. We're going to, um, fix that indexing convention, and then we'll, um, table these first readings for next time when we can make sure we have uploaded what we, um, so everyone can just have to do a review before and be ready to consider.
I would say that if we're going to go into like a little bit more nitty-gritty, we're gonna need more than 10 minutes.
So, I don't think that...
If, if I get, because I can go home and I can post, I can give them to you guys like tomorrow, and then we can have two weeks to read them over.
And so what you do is you could, if you have comments or something, you could just have them, and essentially, anything that you submit, um, now with public record or sent, then, then that's kind of doing the same. So we don't have to have the conversation, unless it's substantive consideration.
Right.
As a first reading, it's very simple.
Can we do sort of like what we did with the contract last night, to make notes on the side or something? Is that something?
That might be considered deliberation, I think it's violating.
I would say that we would just either send it to one person to compile.
It's more of like, can we talk about this? It's sort of like items to bring out, no?
So maybe...
I would not be comfortable with that.
Can...
Yeah, we can't do that.
Can we send it to just one of us, like?
A compiler, I mean, yeah.
Do you want me to be a compiler?
You can be a compiler, if you're...
I'll be a compiler.
Okay.
And that way it'll shorten the discussion.
Can I have, can I have a badge?
You can definitely have a title. We'll review your title. I think we'll add that to your nameplate. So, we're gonna move on now then.
To do the, Lydia being the compiler.
Lydia, the compiler.
Yep.
Um, all right, so for the superintendent's search update, we still had that in here because we weren't sure what might be coming, where we would be at this moment in time. So I don't know that there's anything beyond, um, saying that the, the, I did, um, send, the, the lawyers are now looking over the draft contract. And they know that they need to get it done ASAP, and then, um... Yes, so Sarah and Andy, and then, um, we'll be able to get that back to us. And then what's, what happens after that? Do we...
Executive session.
Do we have to review it again? What do we?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think what we did last time is we, um, we had a meeting in executive session, we had to vote on it in the executive session, and then you have to present it publicly, um, once it's, that's the other, that's the thing different, that's with superintendent contracts. Um, it may have been in that email at some point down the bottom part about...
And again, Art and Carolyn are available for...
Yeah, so maybe we can find, because the thing I'm wondering about, Carolyn said it was gonna...
Should we set a day next week to have an executive session?
Just wait one second. So Carolyn had said it was gonna take two, the whole process should take two or three days.
Right.
Before we got a contract. So I don't know if she was considering that we needed to go into another executive session, do a final vote for it, and we should, if that's the case, then we should be setting that ASAP, so we can post it. But we could, you could still check in with Carolyn, we could post, um, even tomorrow morning.
Right, because I think once it gets, gets sent to, we have to agree, like, whatever edits.
Yeah, so why don't you check in with, get clear, that would be awesome.
Yeah, because Sarah and...
And then we can, um, set something ASAP tomorrow, and...
Yep.
Our poster, who is gonna get a name thing, poster, next, Colleen.
Yeah, Colleen's poster.
The poster, the compiler, I mean...
Monday is a holiday.
That's why we have to, Wednesday would be...
And it'll be...
We might wanna have something placed tomorrow.
Yep.
Tomorrow.
Before noon.
Is everybody available next Wednesday? Should we just plan that one next Wednesday?
Tuesday's the first day you can post it, if you don't do it Friday.
Right, so let's do it Friday, and then worst case, we cancel it if they're not ready.
Yeah, can't wait on Friday.
Oh, and if we do it Wednesday, then Michelle can come.
So I'm, I, I, you can look at it after the meeting. We're gonna continue with our meeting.
Yes, please.
All right. All right, so, um, is there anything else in relation to the superintendent's search update that we'd like to say?
I don't know. Do you wanna read this, the announcement that was sent out and posted and blasted and...
I feel like it was sent out and posted and blasted.
Okay.
So there was a communication that was sent out, posted and blasted.
Okay, very good, so... Right, on the website, excellent. So we'll, we'll then continue. So I'm gonna move into citizens' comments. We have, uh, our second citizens' comment. If anyone would like to comment to the microphone and say anything.
I can't hold a candle to Mr. Johnson.
Can we just put together?
Yeah. Couple of, um, couple of questions just for clarity, because we all kind of missed it as far as the calendar piece. We voted for option two.
Yep.
Is that right? I just wanted to clarify.
Start date.
Okay, so with the August, for the September 2nd start date for kids.
The later one, just in case the building, the roof issue takes longer.
Totally made sense. We just got confused in the back row.
I don't know why, because we are so clear up here.
The other thing is because the calendar came up, I just wanted to encourage the committee to look at a, maybe a religious observance policy. This is something that's been adopted in other districts. So we, I know it was mentioned during the meeting tonight, but we're talking about like whether teachers can give tests. People have split opinions on that.
Right.
Homework policies, um, just, you know, what happens, the instructions that are given to teachers and to families around religious observances. You know, now that we don't observe any of them as a district, I think it would be beneficial to a lot of families, including things like major school events, not planned on major religious holidays, I think, would be a part of that.
Yep.
And it would avoid some of what we saw this year, so, just something I wanted to mention. And, I had one other, oh, I know that there's a lot going into the, the budget and the staffing and music program and engineering and other electives, and there's a lot to consider in that whole process. I just wanted to encourage you to look at our long-term plan, look at our identity as a district, um, and what we, why families and students and teachers want to stay here in Maynard, and how does that then dictate what we do with our budget, how we spend our money, what we choose to resource. So, um, so it doesn't, we are moving into this era of being much more thoughtful and planful in what we do with our funds and how we staff our programs, and we're looking more long-term, and we're not going back to this like patchwork piecemeal by the seat of our pants kind of programming in the district, so...
Can I speak to that? So Brian Haas, um, music instruction and proficiency is part of the mission statement of his district. And so he, they have a curriculum that is able to incorporate small group instructions and whatnot. And so I am very, very hopeful that he is going to be able to come in and help us do more with less.
Yep.
And, so, that's just...
But then even as we're considering, because engineering is something that is important to other families. So again, just that there is that long-term plan and that we know...
Yep.
A year from now, three years from now, seven years from now, here's where we wanna be, and here's how we're gonna get there in the interim, so... But that's a part of this conversation.
One of the things that we heard, I forget if it was from Brian or from Michael, was a, um, healthcare pathway, which is, was it healthcare?
That was Michael, but that's the pathway.
Yeah, so I mean, there's all these different pathways that everybody else is doing too, which I know is, is part of what Jennifer is, is looking at, so...
I mean...
She's mentioned, actually, that one specifically.
Biomedical, she's discussed.
Yeah, yeah. But I think, I think to your, what you're saying about the identity, like who we are and preserving that, and, and something that I know that I had spoken with Bonnie about, um, after the MMM meeting, was that, um, I would like to see more of these conversations about music not only come up during the budget consideration talks, because it seems that approach is very reactive and doesn't give it the credence and the respect that it deserves to have its thoughtful planning during the year, aside from just when we are talking about money.
I totally agree, and it, it doesn't feel like we have this proactive plan for where we're headed.
Right, right, and we did talk with Jennifer, I mean, I know it was in a, for the, the SPC Subcommittee, um, but about having, looking at our strategic plan and thinking about how can we, in a way that doesn't really over-change it, but include the theme of music in some way, um, so that when we are making these decisions, um, they are aligning. So it would be like audio engineering, you know, so these pathways or these conversations are not, um, to your point, are, are making sense for our district decision-making process.
Yep.
So...
And that our guiding document reflects.
Right, and...
Reflects our values and our priorities as a town, yeah.
And I know Jennifer's actually working on, um, making it a little bit more user-friendly for the community in a, in a format that, um, we, we had a discussion the other day about that. There's a couple of other, not reinventing the wheel, um, but a lot of other towns that, you know, can do it, so it really is able to be lived and understood from a, beside an educator lens.
Yeah.
But, you know, the community lens and the parent lens of, you know, we can reflect back to that at each school and say, how does this align when we're making our decisions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Leslie.
All right, so we are going to move into members' comments. This includes Subcommittee report outs.
Go ahead, Mary.
You wanna go first, Mary?
Yeah, we can go first. Um, so, um, Michelle, Lydia, Mary Jane and myself went before, oh, sorry, went before the Finance Committee on Monday night, and, um...
That was a hoot.
That was the first night. They, yeah, they wanted to hear, you know, about the budget and where we were and, you know, us coming in at the 4.4% and spelling that out. Um, and we had been just informed over the weekend that, um, that budget, which was so terrific, we thought, and did so many things, and really, very conservatively, um, we have to cut 150,000 from now. So, um, so now we have to go back to the drawing board, which is very unfortunate, because it means some of the things that we're trying to move the system forward with are not potentially gonna happen, so...
So from, from the 4.4%, 150,000 from, from that, and so what they...
And technically, it's only 4.1%, because the other 0.3% was the money that they were moving from their budget to ours to cover the expense of the facilities manager.
So what is that in percent? 150,000 is what percent?
I knew you were gonna ask me that.
I was, I was texting her.
Didn't even work, we're at the end.
I had texted her a couple of days ago and asked her for that.
Hold on, I'll figure it out.
But anyway, so that, that was, that was disheartening. But, so it's early.
150,000?
Somewhere, I mean, it has to be doable, I mean, yeah.
Well, it definitely translates to, um, reduction.
Yeah, right, I mean, it has to be.
And, and part of that 50,000 of...
That was because they thought that we were going ahead with the preschool expansion, and they had incorporated the 50,000 projected revenue from that into the budget. And once they realized that that wasn't a definite go-ahead, they then had to retract that.
Yeah, I, I wasn't comfortable putting in revenue.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, I completely agree with you.
I mean, that seems a very risky...
Yeah, I said no, so I said, if you're gonna, I, I'm not, if you need 150, you're getting 150. I can't predict 50, and, you know, we do maybe, but again, we can't count on this. We might have money from the Beijing Royal School.
Right, right.
So, and, and we, right, we had those conversations, but those are all what ifs, so...
Right, and I, and you cannot make a budget with what ifs. It has to be concrete, and, and if they need 150, we're giving them 150. I can't give them 100, because I don't know what the preschool money's gonna come in.
That's right.
Can't do it.
So that was that.
Um, oh, what were you gonna say? I was gonna talk about the other pushback we got.
Yes, you can talk about that.
So, when we informed them...
Michelle should talk about that.
Michelle, do you wanna talk about that?
Which, well, what?
Well, when we informed them that the 45,000 that we had included, what that was coming from?
Solar panels.
The solar panels?
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm like, oh my gosh, what? Um, so we are going to be going out to bid, I actually did meet with, um, Justin, no, Justin Demarco this morning.
Okay.
Um, and Kyle, because I'm not going to be here, and I have to pass that off to, um, someone and, um...
So if Justin is the new director of, um...
He's the DPW director. So, wanted to, which I thought was, I actually thought it was funny, I know that's bad for me to say on TV, but, um, whatever. So, throughout all of this budget discussion, you know, we've, I've spent some significant time researching some different solar options and solar companies. As, as you all know, when the high school was built, we actually got a green credit because we made it solar-ready, um, which means that it has the white roof, it has the conduit, it has everything ready to put solar...
Has the mounting hardware.
Right, to put solar panels on it. It's a prime location, um, so it's, it's solar-ready to go. Um, I had, uh, three different companies come in and, and give us some kind of ideas on, you know, what are some other solar options here, um, which ended up being a canopy, um, in the parking lot over here in Fowler was another option. And, and we weren't even thinking that until the companies came in, um, but they said, you know, they do this like crazy study, and they see where the light hits, the sun hits, whatever, and, you know, what your percentage is. And so, um, when we did that, so we brought that to the town, because that's actually something, um, we have a grant from the state to hire a consultant. So the grant is actually $12,500 for us to hire a consultant, which we have, um, I'm waiting for the contract. I haven't officially contracted with her yet, but it's Beacon Services. And what her job is, is to put out the RFP for the, in request for the solar companies to give us bids. But I wanted to do a little bit preliminary, um, because I didn't know what the worth was in, in that. So I wanted to have a better idea of what we should be looking at when the companies came in, so that's why I called them in on myself, by myself. So anyways, we got this like great kind of idea that it would be around, you know, um, a yearly revenue stream of guaranteed 40, um, and possibly up to $55,000 a year for that. One of the, the companies presented us with a rental. It would be a rental fee, which actually I found to be the most beneficial way for us to go, because that rental fee can be put into our facility rental revolving account and doesn't necessarily have to be applied to our electric bill, which would give us the option to apply it to the electric bill if we want to, that's great, or, um, apply it to if we have some sort of crazy, well, we do, but some facility needs outside of that and be able to use those funds how the district sees the best way to use those funds. And it was a, um, very comparable number to the, to the amount of credits that we would be getting if we, it, one's called a rental lease agreement, the other one's before the meter, the other one's behind the meter, type of different things. Plus with that rental agreement, we would also get the option to be, um, the first purchaser of the off-put of the solar panels, which means that we would still get to purchase the electricity at a much discounted rate. So you would save two ways, right? But, so I think it's an awesome thing. We were all excited about it, where, you know, ready to move forward with the consultant, or whatever.
It is an awesome thing.
We had Finance Committee members who, um, were not 100% excited about it, because, um...
Liability.
The liability, which is all worked into the contract. There are multiple districts all around us, um, that all do it, and the possibility of it damaging our roofs.
So, Michelle, is there like, is there, is this, is this concern based on any data or research that was invented?
No, I don't...
So I don't think it's worth entertaining as much, unless we have some...
So I think it was, yeah, I think they, they had some sort of personal experience with it.
Personal experience in a residential environment, which is totally different than...
Correct, which we did state, even Mary, um, said that, um, you know, but just to give...
For context.
The context of it, it was, it was, you know, in the midst of this budget and what you're asking us for and what we're missing out, like, it just seemed very crazy to me.
Well, and we went, we were like a dog with a bone. We're like, look what we got, look what we got, and they're like, no.
Yeah, it was very, it was very crazy to me that that's the, like, response we got. And they weren't comfortable with the fact that the, for some reason, the consultant...
They were afraid the consultant had ulterior motives.
Yeah, that she worked for solar companies. I'm like, her job is to vet the solar company. They should be kissing her butt, I probably shouldn't, you know what I'm saying? Like, it's, it's, she's not working for the solar company. They want her to help them get the, the, um, stuff, and her job is to make sure that she's getting the best deal for us. She's going out for an RFP and, well, RFQ and an RFP. So that is the, the, the way you end up with the best deals and, and the opportunity to, you know, compare apples to apples on people. I feel 100% comfortable, that's how we do all of our contracts, um, so I feel 100% comfortable with the consultant and having her put this out there. Um, I don't really know why, um...
So we're still going ahead with this?
We're 100%, I'm signing a contract before I leave here for it.
All right, all right, moving on.
Yeah, we were just shocked. It didn't occur to us that there would be any pushback.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, so hopefully that is something that also would be happening over the next summer. The timeframe, I talked with her, um, the timeframe for that, um, where we, we would put out, we would get our, um, bids back, and we would pick, um, they're actually solar investors, um, that do it, and that's why it's at zero cost to the district, because they get tax breaks. It's really what it is. It's investment companies that invest in solar, because the, um, uh, utility companies give these crazy tax breaks for, um, the use of solar. So it's the investment company's way of getting a tax break and making some money off of it, but that's really why they're interested in it, and that's why we, it does not cost the district any money in order to have these. And we don't have to pay to maintain them, um, it's their sole responsibility. And also, if we go the rental route, it's, you have a, almost a rental agreement with them on it, which also protects us, um, a little bit more.
The one that I said in on the, they said that they also do educational things with kids.
Yes, they also do educational things. They also like, um, I think the guy that we met with that time, um, talk, Boston Solar, right, had, um, talked about that they put up like a, um, video monitor in each thing, and they talk about how much energy was saved today and how much they made, and, you know, what that translated into and, um, for energy savings, for whatever, and they also come into the classroom... And they also come into the classroom, they like to do a lot of in-classroom talks about energy and being green and so on and so forth. I don't know.
What else is up in the subcommittee?
Both, it's both. You could, we just wouldn't make the same funds back. So, like, as much as we would love to say that that roof actually would make us a ton of money, it's not, the majority of the money would come from the canopy.
If you go by Lincoln Sudbury High School, you'll see that they've got it in their parking lot.
Yeah, it's the same setup, yep.
I've seen it. I was thinking maybe it's the same way to test it since we've already got it installed. We should take advantage of it.
Yeah.
And also, I just wonder, I haven't looked at the structures to see if plowing would be-
So, they already take that all into consideration. I think they said that we would lose one to five parking spaces is usually what they're-
And Ken Estherbrook said that they have the structure where he works at his, been his parking lot.
Yeah.
And he thinks that they're awesome because you don't have to-
Clean off your car.
Clean off your car when it snows.
And so on and so forth.
And they're really, because it's solid, there isn't that much plowing that needs to be done, so.
I know plowing in this town, downtown, so just say-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, and again, that's something that when she's writing our RFP, the consultant, we can say, we want to know what the implications are for plowing in this area. We can also like, you know, the, one of their things was about like roof damage or whatever. You also can ask, what are the implications for the roof damage? Because it is a 30-year contract, right? So, you're agreeing for 30 years. But that's how they do it. That's every single solar company, every single, it's a 20-year contract with two five-year options, basically. But that's every single company how it's done. And also, what you can put in your RFP is the structural engineer, just making sure that we have a structural engineer come in. And even though we say the roof is sturdy and ready and it's been, you know, this is what it was proofed for, it's just making sure that those companies know what our concerns are before we agree to any contract. That's what the consultant is for to do, so.
So, I do want us to be able to get through, no, I'm, I-
It's the last time I'll talk, I promise.
I was actually just listening to, enjoying listening to you speak in our meetings, but it is an exciting thing to have us be able to do.
Yeah.
So, thank you. And I think that that does speak to the need for some public education when we get to that point. I don't know if they're able to help with that.
So, the, with our P, she takes, goes out, they come in, we review them, and then we actually, before we even sign the contract with the solar company, they would come in and present.
Great.
Great.
All right, very good.
What other?
Yeah, I don't know if we want to get into-
I don't think so.
Okay, we don't.
So, I do have to ask just one other question. If you don't, you may not have the answer for today, but just for consideration, I think it would be very helpful knowing if there's $150,000 that needs to be cut to understand kind of what's the process and the time by which you'd return to us with those considerations and what the process that's happening in the meantime in relation to that.
We're going to meet on Tuesday.
I did have a conversation with Greg about it. He's going to present his budget forward with that reduction already in place, so we really have until the town meeting, to be honest with you.
But we're going to get together on Tuesday just to have some discussions.
Do we pick a time yet?
No, we will, after the meeting.
Is there any other considerations that, from the Budget Subcommittee that-
That's what we're going to talk about on Tuesday.
Oh, no, other than, not the $150,000, just anything else. I know you said the MSBA earlier, I was talking about it, so you said that you had something to share.
Well, that, the, so-
Okay, never mind, never mind.
It's getting late.
No, no, it's, okay. I just want to, if we have to make a decision about budget, I just-
We talked about it in public, okay, so, so one of the conversations, and, you know, Bob McCarthy has the, you know, the lengthy spreadsheet, year by year, which he's had it for a long time, and, you know, we were trying to listen. There was some discussion about, and obviously this would be a lot lengthier, about pushing off the Green Meadow Elementary School because it's somewhere between, it'll be somewhere between 30 and 50 million, and going by the timetable that we had had in the past, it's four years down the road. So, and it's a question of whether the town would approve it because we're also going into the fire station. So, one of the conversations that we had, that's why I was pleased with the $2 million for the roof, was have a 10-year plan, put a whole new roof on Green Meadow now that, you know, we were in a better place, and then it gives us time to really make a plan for, you know, what we want to do with Green Meadow and-
And how we're going to finance it.
And how we're going to finance it, you know, so whether the townspeople have the stomach for that kind of an expense.
So-
That's, but it's at the very beginning stages, I mean, that's, yeah, so, that's a-
There's more to come.
More to come, being the time for us to-
Right, well, that's what I'm saying, we have to make a decision on the-
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Do you have anything more?
That was it?
I think so. Is it my turn? If you want it to be.
Okay.
Uh, let's see. I just wanted to thank all the people that sent emails about the music program. I was so impressed with their passion and the, just the background about their lives and how music has shaped their lives. It really touched me, so just wanted to thank. The other thing that I think I had mentioned maybe before or maybe not, is that we have three seats opening for this next election, two three-term seats.
Two three-year.
Right, three-year, and one one-year term. And I would like to do some information sessions for the public to come, like coffees, coffees or whatever, so that people that might be interested can come and learn more about what we do, time commitment, that kind of thing. And I think we're, we need to do something like that in the next couple of weeks, at least putting something together so that we can, because it's open right now.
Do they, is there like a timeline for people, you know, what-
Yes, application, you can now go and get your papers from Town Hall.
Nomination papers.
Nomination papers and start collecting signatures.
Yeah, I think it's March 13th, I think, is the deadline, or 15th.
Yeah.
Like, March, you can use the last to pull it and 15th to turn it in or something like that.
But you don't want to do that because you want leeway in case there's a few signatures, either on a lot of extra signatures or leeway in case something goes wrong.
Okay.
So, you can correct it.
So, at some point, that kind of information will be coming out. I also wanted to just kind of piggyback on what Leslie had mentioned about homework over holidays. I would love to eliminate homework over, especially like Thanksgiving, where it's not a long, you know, time and people are away. It drives me absolutely nuts when you go away and your kid is saying, I have homework, and you're trying to do family stuff. So, I would love to have, you know, it doesn't have to be every holiday, but like, you know, big ones like Thanksgiving would be nice. And then the last thing is we have a communications subcommittee meeting on Wednesday at nine?
That sounds about right.
At nine.
So, we need to make sure that's posted. Poster? Thank you, poster.
I think it was, I thought you already posted it.
You did.
It might have been too far out for me to post because you won't post it. Oh, really? Oh, I didn't know.
You were too proactive.
Yes, because I do remember reminding you.
Okay.
What's the time frame? Does it have to be two days?
Has to be 48 hours excluding holidays and weekends, so if I post it in the morning, you're good for-
And Friday's a half day, too.
Okay, thank you, Colleen.
All right, my turn?
Okay.
You got it. So, just on the 6th of January, we did just, we had those, our first strategic planning and curriculum took me, it went well. Our next meeting will be after February vacation, and so evolving conversations there. We talked about pathways, music, as Mary mentioned about our teacher and principal looking at the music program and how do, how do we figure that out? So, that was really great to have, followed by the MMA meeting, which is also, again, appreciation, all the feedback that we received, just the community engagement. I always loved to see all the people who went to that meeting as opposed to who come to our meeting. I was like, wow, you know, and they weren't giving away anything, you know, just- I know, you, but I was like, I was like, wow, look how ready, you know, but it was just, again, it's just a example of the engagement and, you know, appreciation for that program. So, it's really great to hear the feedback from the community there and how they were able to document those ideas. CPAC, we had the social on the 14th, which was rescheduled. It did have a low attendance, a lot of kids been out sick. And Mary Jane, I just wanted to pivot to you. I don't know, I know a lot of districts are having flu, and I know Maynard particularly is being hit with that. Is there any other like process cleansing, sanitizing that are happening in the schools that we are doing extra?
I don't think our tenants has been back here.
Okay, I-
Doesn't mean we can't sanitize it. I will chat with them.
If there's any opportunity, because I know a lot of, in the social media, there's a lot of, and just in person, I know that there's a lot in elementary, and I think it's sibling, it's going up to the Fowler. If there's any conversation or community, I know other districts, we were at West Springfield, and they did a superintendent blast about like, hey, you know, these are the steps we're doing, whatever you feel is appropriate, but just, I know it's a conversation happening in the community.
I just got a superintendent, just to see what other districts were doing.
Yeah, yeah.
We just got something on that, actually.
It seems pretty harsh this year.
Hudson's been, just in one particular school.
Yeah, I saw that was in the news, that made me-
Forty-seven percent.
Yeah, the school.
When I checked the other districts, nobody seems to be hit as much as them, but we are, they are talking about, you know, what precautions, and I actually just got that today.
Oh, okay, great, great, thank you.
So, I will put something together.
Very timely.
It came out today.
That works out great.
And I think the Hudson superintendent must have sent something out, says, is anybody else experiencing this, but nobody else seemed to be at that level.
Well, it started happening like before the break, and then-
I think we get the idea. Sorry, do you mind if we continue?
I was able to attend the Green Meadow Future, I mean, the Green Meadow School Council meeting the other day, and there was some conversation about books for bingos, and I don't know how or when or what, and that did not happen last year, and I know there was a lot of reinstituting because of all what happened. So, I just, there was concern about whether it's going to happen this year, how, funding, all that. I don't have the answer, but I just wanted to-
I don't even know what it is.
Okay, and that, and you don't have the historical knowledge on that? So, that would even be a reason-
Books for Bingo is actually completely run, and it's, there's no actual budget for it because the whole-
It's Title I, right.
They're donated, aren't they?
The whole process actually generates the books, I believe, right?
So, I think there's under those Title I funding that has historically been used for it. I don't know enough about the funding piece, but I just want to-
I'll find out.
Raise it to your attention that that was a concern.
Joanna.
Yeah, that's a, yeah, yeah, thank you. And then just the next CPAC collaboration meeting is next Tuesday, January 21st. And that's all I got.
So, I only have two things. One was, I just wanted to commend, I meant to do this from an email where the, at the Fowler, they were bringing six, they did like a little pilot program, they're trying to do this for the rest of the year, bringing the sixth and seventh graders outside for just a 10-minute recess after lunch, which I thought was really nice that they were looking for ways to make that happen and give them a little break, and they seemed to think that it's-
My daughter loves it.
It's been very challenging, but that they knew the students were really appreciative of that, and that's been something that's been spoken of in the community previously, so I wanted to mention that. And then just the principal search, there's a principal search on at the Green Meadow, and we have talked about consideration for the new, as negotiations, if negotiations go well, being, having this new super involved in that. And it sounded like the timing will work out to be able to have them hit the ground running, because that email went out and that was the first thing that I thought of, right? And then I just wanted to mention that Josh texted me today, it's so funny because his brain must like go in 10 million different directions sometimes.
Can you say who Josh is in case I-
Josh, sorry, he's the Chair of the Green Meadow Future Committee, and he just said, you may want to add to the principal search a job description if you can, that there's, we have the invite for the MSBA Phase One feasibility study because that can be attractive for a candidate. So, yeah, apparently some people really like that stuff. Anyways, so he, that was his suggestion. That's all I have, so.
Just a couple of individual things, sorry.
Okay. Do you mind speaking into the microphone?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Important. So, the first one is the Opportunity Act status, because I don't know if everybody got the memorandum, but we're supposed to have something to the state by April.
Yes, I forwarded it to the TRICOM Budget Committee.
I added it to the rolling agenda as a marker for us because we would have to, yeah.
Because I'm not quite sure how it's going to start or that, but we do have-
I put it on on March, I did see that.
March is late.
I put, well, we have to approve it.
Right, but we need to put it together first.
They need to put it together. We approve it, or not her, she won't be here.
Right. So, I guess, Mary Jane, I guess it falls on you.
Spending plans required by recently enacted legislation.
That's, that's part of the new law.
Carol forwarded to you.
Jennifer's actually started working on it.
I think she is, too. I, because she-
I just want to make sure that we don't lose our opportunity, so, because I was surprised at how, even though it said they don't actually quite have all the details to us yet, but we've got, yeah, we've got the April-
Either planning around, yeah.
There you go.
So, anyway, so that's that. And then the preschool, the, we've been having a conversation about the preschool potential expansion, and I'm just guess wondering where we are for next year, because I know we've got a preschool information.
We are not moving forward with it for next year.
Because? That's a question.
Because?
Implications that require a lot more planning.
Could that be-
There's not enough time to get, to get, you know, we, I'm not even sure we have enough-
Contracts and stuff to consider.
Seemed as though we had enough interest.
Enough interest.
We did have enough interest, it seemed as though.
I'll have to have Jennifer speak more on that, because I was trying to say we did not have enough interest, but again, it's really hard to rule something out that quickly.
Could you bring it up in your interim report for next term?
Please, yeah, because I, because that was, again, in an effort of trying to bring in more revenue to, for our schools, because I know we were all pretty excited about the idea initially, so.
Though they were very cautious about that even when it was first brought up, so. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, well, then I'm going to suggest that we are going to move into executive session,